Ready to go.
All right, thank you. We will get started. Welcome. This is Santaquin City Planning Commission meeting. It's Tuesday, March twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five. All right. Would anyone like to get us started tonight with a thought or an indication?
Mr. Chairman, I'll start out with a thought.
Thank you, Commissioner Romero.
Where there's hope, there's light. It fills us with rest, courage, and make us strong again. And Frank, from her book, The Diary of a Young Girl.
Thank you.
Oh.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Would anyone like to get us started with, not get us started, I can't think, and talk and read at the same time? Who would like to lead us in the pledge tonight?
I can do that.
All right, thanks.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Wade. All right, here is the agenda for tonight. We've had a proposal to reorder these agenda items slightly. We do have representatives or applicants here for Agenda Items three and four, so maybe we'll just move those up front. And then we'll circle back around to Agenda Items one and two, if there's no objections. All right. But first, we have a public forum. So for those of you who are in attendance, this is your chance to address the commission. We do have two public hearings on the agenda tonight. So if there were comments related specifically to those public hearings, please hold on to those comments. We'll give you a chance to speak then. But if there's anything else that you'd like to bring before the commission, now would be the time. So I'll open the public forum at seven oh two and invite any comments if anyone would like to. Okay, then we will close the public forum at seven oh two and we will move right into Agenda Item number three, which is a proposed parking reduction request for Santaquin Peaks Lot Number fourteen.
Okay, so this is a parking, a proposed parking reduction for Lot fourteen in Santaquin Peaks. It's Kirk Green Hall's property over in New Industrial Park that we have over by Summit Ridge. So this is the reductions only for this specific site. So this isn't like what we did before where we were doing a code amendment that affected all the different, you know, possible sites throughout the city. This is only for, for this site, and I will show you real quick where it's located. So you have the highway right here, you got Summit Ridge coming along right here. This is the new industrial park. It'll be this lot right here on the corner. And then this is their proposed site plan. Well, actually, it's the approved site plan. This has gone through DRC, and they did receive conditional approval based on either getting this parking reduction or they'll have to come back and add the additional parking stalls that they are missing. So it's conditionally approved on one of those two. They have to do one of those two to get official, final approval. So to kind of go over what they are requesting. So right now, they have twenty, a total of twenty-five parking stalls are required. Twelve stalls are required for the warehouse and thirteen stalls are required for the office, according to our code. They are proposing twenty, they show twenty-one stalls on their site plan that DRC conditionally approved. So they're asking for a reduction of four. And one of the items, and we do have the applicant here today, but one of the reasons why they are proposing a reduction is, one, is a large warehouse, and the, the other reason is talking of Kirk Green Hall. He said that a lot of their employees will actually be parked behind the fence, which will be road base. So they'll have road base in the back and a lot of the employees will be parking behind the fence, which will leave a lot of these parking stalls open for other, other people and customers and different things like that. So they have a lot of area in the back for employees to park. And so we have right here, this is the code that the Planning Commission follows for reduction in, in parking. And so really, they're basing off, they aren't doing a shared parking. This is going to be a large floor area. So most of it is warehouse. So they're proposing the large floor area reduction. And then these are the conditions that they have to meet for a reduction. So if they have the reduction, they still have to meet those three items listed down here. And staff believes that they are meeting those three items. And so the Planning Commission is the land use authority tonight. So you have the authority, you have the discretion to say yes or no to this, to this proposal. And that is report, and I'm here to answer any questions you have.
All right, thanks, Ryan. All right, the applicant's here tonight. Is there anything you'd like to add to that presentation? Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. Commissioners, we've heard the presentation, and it's our job tonight to consider this request and approve it or deny, since the Planning Commission is the land use authority. Any thoughts or questions for either staff or the applicant?
I have a question on the reduction. We have to have ADA parking spots. With the reduction, there would only be twenty parking spots.
So with ADA, we do count those as parking stalls.
You count them?
Yes, that is counted towards the total.
I have a question then. What is the nature of the business? I know it was mentioned that there will be a warehouse and an office. Is there, will there be, I guess I'm looking for like information on how many people will be visiting during the day? What kind of client traffic there will be, things like that? Would you step up to the microphone for us and state your name for the record?
Case Green Hall.
Thanks.
There won't be a lot of visitors like throughout the day. It's just kind of our office and our shop to work on trucks and stuff.
Okay.
So because you guys are an excavation company, and so that's why most people will park in the back and have like dump trucks and stuff parked in back and they'll drive.
Yeah.
And the employees mainly will park on the gravel or road base. Okay.
Makes a lot of sense. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
That was really my only question.
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I don't see a problem with this reduction based on the business that it is. And the square footage of that building, I don't think it was too much of a problem for a future business going there. If there was expansion on this building or any more that would be built behind it, I would say I, like, we'd expand parking lot with that. But with this square footage and mainly warehouse, I would, I like this twenty-one stalls works.
Seems reasonable. We don't want to have too much parking either, right? We want to have sufficient parking, but too much parking is a waste, so.
Right, yeah. For their business specifically, this works great because you don't have really clients coming to the office at all, so.
Yeah, okay. All right, anything else we need to discuss?
I agree with all that.
For the variance, can we tie it to the business? Because if another business comes in and there are more parking, we, we wouldn't want that to happen.
So that's a good question, and maybe you can address that, Ryan. I, my understanding is that if a parking reduction is granted, it is with the property, basically. It lives with the property, right?
That is correct. So it would be a reduction for, if they, if the use changes, then they have to meet the requirement. But if somebody else comes in and uses it as a warehouse and office, then this parking reduction would stand. But if they came in and said, well, I'm, I'm gonna do a gym, that is a major change in use. Or I'm gonna do, you know, something else, a stinking gym because we just dealt with that recently. But then they would have to meet our current code because it's a major change. But if it's a similar use, then that, it would stay.
So similar use, it would stand?
Yes, but if it changes.
Major change, then they would have to meet code?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
It's kind of how a conditional use works. A conditional use, if you're somebody, you get a conditional use for, let's say, a business, and you sell it and somebody else comes in and does the same type of use. You don't have to come in and get an additional conditional use. But if they change the use of the business and that also requires a conditional use, then they have to get a new conditional use. So it's the same, same type of thing.
Yeah, that's a good question.
And same, if they were to expand that building, like if they were adding on to it, they'd have to meet parking code for occupancy.
Correct. If they were to expand, they'd have to go through an amended site plan process and meet all the current codes. And if they wanted to request a new parking reduction, they could, but they would have to meet all current codes. And pretty much over the parking reduction if they wanted to do that.
Yeah, good questions.
Is this the same as the last applicant last, earlier this month with the gym? Came or they were reducing the parking is, were they granted a conditional use?
No, so that was a code amendment that, when it, when it was presented, it was a code amendment for all commercial recreational uses within the city. And they were requesting to reduce the parking, but it was for all businesses that were commercial recreation, that fall under commercial recreation. This is a parking reduction for just this lot. So it's not affecting any other businesses.
All right, thank you.
All right, any other discussion items? Is anyone prepared to make a motion?
I will. I'll make a motion to approve the proposed parking reduction, which reduces the required number of parking stalls from twenty-five spots to twenty-one spots.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Nixon. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Wade. All right, anything else we need to talk about before we vote? Let's vote. Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood?
Yes.
Commissioner Nixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Moke?
Yes.
Okay, that parking reduction is approved and it's unanimous. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right, let's move on now to Agenda Item number four. This is a discussion on multifamily units in the Main Street residential zone.
Okay, so real quick, I'm gonna show the code that we're gonna be discussing. Then I'm gonna kind of explain how this came about, why we're having a discussion, and talk about why this previously changed to what it is now, and then kind of staff's opinion. And then we can have a discussion about it. But this highlighted right here, this is the code that we're gonna be discussing tonight. It's a very small portion of the code, but it says, "A minimum lot size for multifamily development in the Main Street residential area shall be one acre. The minimum density of the multifamily development should be eight units per acre, and the maximum density should be twelve units per acre." So that's what we're gonna be discussing tonight. And so kind of how this came about, let me pull up this really quick. We had a resident, Mr. Martinez, he's here tonight. He lives on this property, this parcel, right here. So this is Evergreen Point. If I zoom out a little, this is Family Dollar, right here. So he lives right behind Family Dollar, just a little bit north of the townhomes, behind Family Dollar. So he would like to do a duplex on this property, and he'll go into more detail. I'll let him go into more detail what he is wanting to do. But that doesn't work with how our code is currently written, because as you can see right now, his property is point three five acres. And a duplex is considered multifamily. And so right now, we're required, you're required to have at least one acre and then a minimum density of eight units per acre. And so Mr. Martinez, he's talked to our Assistant City Manager, Jason Bond, several times, and he came to the city, the last city council meeting and talked at the public forum about his concerns with, with the code and not being able to do a duplex. And the mayor and city council asked staff to take it, take this through the process and see what we come up with and so they can look at it and decide if it's something they want to move forward with or not. And so that's why it's coming before you today. We're doing a discussion item today, kind of explain why it's coming forward, and then to get any feedback we can from the Planning Commission, because this will be on the next Planning Commission as a public hearing. Next Planning Commission in April. So we're hoping to get some feedback, so it'll help us create our proposal. So a little background, I won't go into too much detail, but one of the reasons why we did the one acre, the city decided to do the one acre and eight units per acre is, one, larger developments, you're gonna, they believed back then that the larger developments will have nicer amenities, they'll look nicer. One of the reasons why the eight units per acre was done is, if you remember in our code, eight, when you have eight units, you're required to have a tot lot. If you're within a thousand feet of a park, then you can do a different amenity. But once you hit eight units, you're required to provide an amenity. So the Planning Commission, City Council back then decided the one unit or one acre, create a little bit bigger development, the eight units would require some type of amenity. And so that's where the, that's one of several of the reasons why the one acre and the eight units per acre happened. Before this, we allowed for multifamily anywhere in the MSR. There was no units per acre. There was no, how big the lot had to be. Really, the density would be based off of, you have to meet our landscaping and our parking code. That's in most other zones when we do multifamily, that's what dictates how many units per acre you can have. You just have to meet our landscaping and our, and our parking requirement. And so talking with, so Jason and Aspen and I have talked about this yesterday and today. And our, our opinion is, is the MSR, the MSR, when it was first developed, was for multifamily because it is close to Main Street. It's close to a, a Main Street that can handle the traffic. It's close to commercial. It's easy access to the interstate. And you can do infill development where utilities already exist, so we're not installing new utilities for the city to maintain. So staff, staff's opinion is it, it is going back to how it was before, allowing multifamily because it's a good place. Good planning practices are you have multifamily more in the center. And then as you go further out, you have the larger lots, single family lots. You don't want to have, you know, random townhome, high density where it's not appropriate. You know, not next to commercial, next to transit, along Main Street, we have the bus stops, and we might get more in the future as the city grows, you know, you never know what will happen. So that's staff's, staff's opinion, but this is up to, of course, the Planning Commission and City Council. And so tonight, we're just having the discussion, we're hoping to get some feedback from the Planning Commission on what, what you are thinking with this. But really, this came about because currently a duplex would not be allowed on his lot. He's surrounded by multifamily, and he's not able to do his duplex. And just to remind the Planning Commission, so the duplex, it falls under the umbrella of multifamily. So right now, it would fall under the multifamily standards and the parking, everything, it just falls under the multi, multifamily. We don't have a separate official definition of duplex because we've moved that definition under multifamily.
Okay.
So.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. So Mr. Martinez, I understand that you wanted to make some comments. Would you step up to the microphone for us? And I have to ask you to state your name for the record.
What was that?
Would you state your name for the record for us, please?
Lonnie Martinez.
Thank you.
And then in regards to the MSR code, I've got some pictures here of the property, if you guys would like to pass them around.
Sure, thanks.
Some pictures I took today that. So as was mentioned, the reasoning, I've been trying to, to find the logistics behind the code that was, that was created, I can't believe, twenty, twenty? Anyway, and I still can't figure out why it was created that way. But as, as he mentioned, one of the reasons, and I, and I, this was sent to me, something that was acknowledged by many was that small, multiple family developments were too small to have amenities, particularly the tot lots, and therefore weren't acceptable in a nice. Now, the way I understand it, a tot lot is a play area, right? For those that are living in those dwellings. So I live on Third West, over by this elementary school. I left for five years with work transferred, came back, and I was inundated by multiple dwelling homes. Anyway, I don't know if you can pull that area up. I also own a set of duplexes that have been there for almost thirty years prior to all the high-density housing. And if you look at that, it's sixty-seven South, four hundred West.
Okay.
But if you look at that duplex, the yards behind them, oodles and oodles of, if you want to call it tot lot space or whatever.
Right across.
Play area, yeah. And yeah, it's a set of duplexes right next.
Right across the street.
It's the gray roof one, the big gray roof right above your arrow.
Right.
In the middle, right there.
Right there.
That one, yeah.
Yep, that one right there.
Okay.
So if you look, there's oodles of parking space up front. There's a parking stall besides the garages.
I like those duplexes.
Backyard, plenty of backyard. So with this home, it sits on a third acre. And if you look at those pictures, oodles of play area for, you know, even if I turn it into a duplex, I just split the backyard in half. Lots, lots of area for kids to play. If I turn it into a duplex, if you'll notice on that picture, it shows the walkout basement.
On the left-hand side, on the east side.
Side. So I would extend a carport and put a parking area also right there.
So it's a basement apartment right now? So it'd be an up and down duplex? Okay.
So that home was inherited by my wife.
Okay.
My father-in-law built it with the intentions of turning it into a duplex. I think he had a little bit of a vision that it was gonna be a little tough for kids, grandkids. So he never put a stairway going to the basement from the upstairs.
Oh, okay.
For the, the fact that he knew that was gonna be a duplex someday. So he put two walkouts on each side of that house. So he was planning on turning them into two small apartments down below, studios, whatever. So it's, it's all ready to do it. He just never followed through while he was living there. And when they passed, my wife inherited, and so we've been saving our shekels so we could possibly turn that into a duplex, which is coming up close. And that's why when I proposed it and they said they had changed the ordinance, well, you can't turn that into a duplex. We rent the upstairs now as it is. And I thought, what? I'm surrounded by multiple family dwellings.
Yeah.
And I sit on a huge lot, and I can't turn that house into a duplex. There's something wrong here. Anyway. Yeah. So that, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to maybe propose an amendment to the ordinance or whatever. And, and I, and, and as I've driven around, one of the council members says, or brought the question, do you think it'll open up the floodgates for that whole MSR district? And possibly, but if you put stipulations on anything that'll be changed after this, say it has to be a third acre, so that there's plenty of tot, plenty of, plenty of parking. But so on the north end in this MSR district, if I'm correct, there are one, two, three, four, five, six multiple family dwellings on the north side of Main Street. On the south side of Main Street, there are fives, which is a combination of townhomes duplexes and triplexes. Fourplexes, so there's a little bit of everything.
Yeah.
But if you look closely, and I've driven around, there's really not a whole lot of, there's not a whole lot of homes that would be able to qualify for the, the tot lot space or extra parking. So unless, unless the ordinance was changed as far as size of lot that would be able to qualify for turning a home into a duplex. You know, there's, there's a lot of things, there's a lot of varieties you can add, add to it, you know. But there's plenty of parking, plenty of space for kids to play on this lot. My proposal would be if, if any of the other homes qualify for the same, then make an amendment or the change. But I don't think there's a whole lot of homes that are gonna qualify for that type of space. There'll be a few, but not very many.
Especially in the MSR district.
Right.
And so it's not, it's not like it's affecting every.
Middle of, yeah, where it's gonna create a problem. And I can see, I can see some neighbors or some neighborhoods kind of opposing it.
Yeah.
But this is a different district, and there's already multiple family dwellings in, all along this MSR district. So anyway, I, that's just my proposal is just, if it's big enough, then maybe tweak the amendment or amend it and say, okay, it's gotta be so big and it's gotta have plenty, plenty of space.
Right, right.
That's my spiel.
All right.
Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Martinez?
Not yet.
Yeah.
Sit right here.
Thank you. I guess my first comment would be it's zoned MSR for a reason. Right? The city, by zoning it that way, intended for higher density there. So I'm not opposed to doing something like this. I do think it would make sense, though, to think carefully about when it does make sense and when it doesn't. So area requirements, making sure we're taking care of parking and things like that. But that's, that's how I feel about it.
Can I just make one more comment?
Sure.
So with the way it stands right now, it's a minimum of eight per acre and a maximum of twelve. That's a lot of units on one acre. There's not gonna be much space for anything there. As you've noticed on most of the multiple family dwellings now, they're parking out in the streets.
Yeah.
Because there's no parking. And there's, there, there's only one multiple dwelling, that's the one next to this house, where they have a nice, big play area. The rest of them.
Not very big.
I can, it's not, it's no bigger than this area, and they just put a little monkey bar or whatever, and they call that a tot lot. You got five, six homes there? How many kids are gonna be playing on that?
Yeah.
Anyway.
Yep.
Thanks.
So I can give a few examples really quick, smaller and larger developments. So as Mr. Martinez was explaining, so this is three, four, one townhomes. For you, those that were on the Planning Commission when this came through, it's three, it's a three townhomes. It's on, I believe it's about point two four acres. So they didn't have to do any amenities, but they still had to meet, I think it's thirty, thirty percent has to be landscaped, I believe, if it's a single family. If it's, if it's mixed use, I believe it's twenty percent. So they had to do thirty percent, and then they have a parking stall here, two parking stalls here, and then they have garages here. So not, they met the thirty percent, they pretty much utilized every inch possible to get those three units. On about, I'd say it's about a quarter, quarter acre. So that's one of the smaller, that, that was the last development we've had in MSR since this code has changed to require the one acre. And then some of the larger ones are, is the one that is next to the applicants. This is Evergreen Point.
How big is that lot?
Um, I would have to look at the plat because it's not gonna tell me unless I look at the plat. But I did look at the.
That, the lot where the townhomes are on, it's probably close to two acres.
Two acres.
Right.
And.
That actually, my wife's family used to own the whole.
Okay.
That whole, yeah, that whole section. And we kept the home, the big lot with it.
And so three, four, one townhomes is about eleven units per acre. Evergreen Point, this is about, I think it was right around fifteen. And then you have. And then you have. High park north and south and these were right around, I think sixteen to eighteen units per acre. Can't remember exact, but it's right around in that area. So some of the smaller ones are a little less dense, some of the bigger ones are a little more dense. Um and then the last one that we have that I looked at really quick before the meeting. Is the development just north of Macy's. Uh this development and that's about eleven units per acre.
I guess one of the questions I have is why are we seeing eight per acre? Why couldn't we say two per quarter acre? In the MSR or four for half acre or six for three quarter acre?
So my I was thinking the same thing, why can't we propose point one two five acres per dwelling on anything under an acre?
Yeah.
That would be more than.
He could do more, yeah.
So, yeah, but my question is, why can't we amend this to say? We propose point one two five acres per dwelling on any lot less than an acre and have that added into the code.
Yeah, like do it per, yeah.
And the reason I would propose that is because someone who has a third of an acre lot, who wants to be able to put a duplex on it.
Adjacent to multi housing.
Should be able to do that. And if we don't allow that, we're pricing out anybody in that price range that maybe could afford that. But couldn't afford, you know, like an eight unit, one acre piece. And we're trying to encourage.
Moderate.
Moderate income housing and this would do that.
Yeah. I agree. But we're looking at the multi housing code under the multi housing, not just because of the Main Street residential.
So this would fall under, so it's actually will be just for the MSR.
Okay.
Uh so this is the Main Street Business District's zone that encompasses the CBD, the MSR and the CBD. Uh but as it's written right here, you can see it says Main Street Residential Area. So this specific code right now is only for the Main Street Residential Area, the MSR. Where we require that one acre, so you can still leave the MSR in there and then update the code and it only affects the MSR.
And not say maybe an acre, but maybe say how many. I remember when we passed this because we had gotten a lot of those developments that came in. And they did cram them in to sixteen or eighteen per acre and that was, that was frustrating. And so we reduced it to, well, we I should say maximized it to eight so that they weren't so crammed in there. So I can see us wanting at that time, that's why we did this, but now. It makes more sense to say, well, we can do two per quarter acre or four. Could we say that or? Cause if we're saying per acre here, but he doesn't have an acre, maybe we just take out the minimum per acre. The minimum acre.
Yeah.
So you, so what you're thinking is taking out the actual lot size requirement.
Yes.
And then having some type of density requirement.
Yes, yeah, I like that.
Yeah.
Oh.
Instead of um changing a code that's gonna affect every lot out there. Make something more unique to people in this specific situation.
Yeah.
And instead. What we have here is for new developments and people who want to do a reconstruction on their original dwelling, make it a little bit more lenient. I think that'd be simpler in the code, but I don't, I don't know.
Well, I kinda like this cause this is only the Main Street Residential, so it's not gonna be like everyone can just throw up a duplex and.
So I I've got another scenario that might arise. So say my kids or my grandkids down the road sell that. That lot is still big enough to probably, if somebody by then, you know, uh prices are gonna go up all all the above. Somebody might wanna tear that house down and put a fourplex on it, which I think is still big enough for a fourplex.
It would be.
On a third of an acre. So that's maybe something else to think about, you know what I'm saying? We've gotta look ahead and not just for the moment when they created this, they they didn't. And I'm not putting blame on nobody, cause it's hard to to vi- to vision what's gonna happen and what's not gonna happen, but. Inevitably, the growth is coming this way and it's gonna always be changing. But it's gotta, it's it to me, it's gotta, it can't be going back and forth. I I've already been stung twice because of that. Uh and and I just, I I just don't want it happening again. You know what I'm saying? Because at the time I couldn't do something because of the code. Down the road, the code was changed and it cost me. I could've done it with the new code. So I don't know, there's just, you know, we gotta look at down the road ways also, like, you know what I'm saying? So maybe it's just like you're proposing is, there's only certain lots. That these situations can be changed, you know, like for instance, this is a huge lot. For just a duplex, you know, and it's not taking up anymore. We're not gonna be building onto the property. All we're doing is converting the basement into a into a family dwelling. So anyway, just just thoughts, thank you.
If I remember right, the point of this code was really just to stop the high density all over because people would have to buy multiple lots to get that one acre.
Yeah.
And that didn't seem feasible at the time. I don't mind this code, I think this code is well written, that's what I thought, just a little line saying, you know, this is for new developments. And this is for existing homes that are remodeling. If they're keeping eighty percent of their dwelling, they have a different requirement. I I'm trying to make it simpler and easier in code, I don't know if that would.
So saying that would mean that if his grandkids did come in, rip out the house, wanna put a fourplex in, it would apply to them.
Yeah, then this, this one would apply to them.
No.
Why why don't we just remove the first sentence from I?
I don't, I'm, maybe I'm over complicating it, but I'm trying to make it simpler.
I could see with new development, it it's different. But I don't know.
Real quick, when it comes to if they were to, let's say they have a duplex, it's allowed. And they tore down the the home to do a fourplex, that would be considered a new development.
Yes.
Yeah, so just make sure that we have that, so. But uh uh I think what you're proposing is if they have a single family home. And just to make sure I understand correctly, they have a single family home and they remodel it. Or maybe even do a little addition, turn it into a duplex, then we have a different code for that.
That, yeah, essentially, that's what I'm thinking. I think it'd be simpler, but I don't know.
I actually, I I get what you're saying, but I think we could just keep it all in this one line. We just take out the area shall be one acre. I think we take that out. Because then everything can be the same and then we go to the end of eight units per acre and we say. Or two per quarter or four for. Yes, because then we are still keeping any new development coming into the eight units per acre. Maximum twelve units per acre. We're still keeping what we wanted. But then people can come in on a third of an acre or even a quarter of an acre and get a duplex in it, cause it'd be plenty of room.
And a third of an acre, you could do a fourplex.
Well.
Right?
That's where it's gonna get tricky. You could do a triplex on a third.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because you have to have your parking and you have to have.
Which you could make that house.
So are you thinking more of a tiered system where you say if it's quarter acre, you can go to, oh, sorry. Sometimes I don't realize people are. I'm sorry.
We were talking about his being a triplex and it's on a third, so it works perfect.
Yes. I just think removal of the minimum lot size for a multi family development in the Main Street Residential. Area shall be one acre. That sentence, if we remove it, it fixes this.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, you can, you can do that.
Because the density is defined. Yeah, it'll scale in, it'll go down.
Yeah, and then and then in parentheses next to eight units per acre or like two per quarter.
One thing to be aware of though is if, I get why you wanna take that first sentence out, but if you take out the Main Street Residential. Then it's affecting the entire Main Street Business District and um that is gonna be. Uh could be pro- problematic possibly with um mixed use. Cause we in other two areas, the CBD and MSC, we require commercial on the bottom. So it might limit how much commercial will go in because if we only allow a certain amount of density.
Then keep the Main Street Residential.
And it could restrict how much commercial is actually gonna be on the bottom unless they have really big units.
But in the next sentence, it says the minimum density in the Main Street Residential area shall be eight units per acre. And the maximum density shall be twelve units per acre. So are we breaking that? Because we still are stating Main Street Residential.
Actually, uh yes, with if the code amendment we're proposing later on is passed, then that will work. But if it's not going off of how we had it have it right here.
I see what you're saying.
Cause you're, I'm looking at the new piece, sorry. Yeah, I had just been going off of this because that that hasn't been approved by the the city council yet. But we can, we can base it off of that. I that's why I had just been going off of this, but if we have it that way, how we have it written. Um I can pull that up really quick. Uh the proposal. It's uh, this is the proposal right here. We're kind of breaking it up. This will be another code amendment. Uh one of the code amendments we'll be looking at later on. But we we broke it up and we we tried to uh add this part right here for the Main Street Residential. So it's clear that eight to twelve units was specifically for the MSR, trying to make it very clear. So if we go off of this, then yes, that eight to twelve units will just be for the MSR if you take out that first sentence.
Yep.
Um one thing to be aware of is he, uh the applicant still will not be able to do his development unless we do some type of.
Change on this.
Change because it's eight units per acre and he wouldn't meet that requirement. He wouldn't have eh enough units.
Well, you would have enough units if you take out the first sentence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But but what if we keep this code just for new development? And people that like Ms. Martinez that already has property, they're not building on it, but they wanna convert it. To like rental property, like a duplex. But that should be allowed as long as they're not adding a new building. And then if, you know, you sell it later and to a developer, then that. This this applies, cause I'm afraid that if we start changing this, it's just gonna. Throw what the plan of how we want Main Street to develop into like. A whole, a a mess, you know, we're gonna have too many exceptions.
Can you have an example?
I see like Mr. Martinez, you know, he should have a right to be able to. You know, he has a property, there's a residential that's there, he can convert it to rental or income generating property. With the way it is right now.
Michael, do you have an example of what you're thinking on that? Why it would throw it into a a different?
Well, if you change this, okay, you're changing the way the plan is, how the layout of Main Street is gonna be. You know, or where you're changing the density or the size of the lots.
So it.
There was a whole purpose that that's why they wanted the lots. Uh the size that and the density, the size that spelled out here. You know, cause otherwise you're gonna have a watch, podge, different sized lots with all kinds of houses. This could be a big mess for city, for the city is for for, for example, the fire department. You have one acre that has twelve units, you have one acre that has six units. You know, if there's a fire, it's it's gonna be horrible. You know, we gotta be consistent in the development. Um but the houses that are already there, they they should have some kind of exception to use the property that the way they want it. Uh for that purpose and then that purpose will change if you sell it to a developer and then this should apply.
Yeah.
That makes more sense than to beat our heads over changing all the the rules and making it more complicated. Um that's my thought.
I do wanna say I appreciate you coming in, trying to do it the right way, because some people convert these things and don't tell anybody. And that's more frustrating than. No. Yeah, well, and you know, there's a lot of those. Right, and so that's where this applies to all the code now, having to change the code. Um I don't know, I just keep going back, cause it's only affecting the orange area, it's only affecting the Main Street Residential. Which is already, and we we did a minimum eight units per acre. To help stop all those big developments that are coming in and cramming in so many units. And so we reduced that already, so even seeing eight units per acre would be nicer than what we've had.
Yeah.
And there's not that many properties that can um that would even have an acre on the Main Street Residential anymore. I think we're mainly looking at third acres now, any one quarter. Yeah, they'd have to buy lots of old homes and tear them all down and then they wanna get their money back and they'd want to to get the twelve maximum density. Um so I I don't know, I see, I kind of still want to propose, like, I'm not proposing anything yet. But I still like the idea of if we're saying eight units per acre. Um I don't think we should have a minimum acre development. I don't think there's much we can develop in that area besides. I see on the west end, there's probably a big lot that would be affected, that would be a problem. Um.
Yeah, I don't, I drove around several times on both sides. There's not a whole lot of property that qualifies without.
Yeah.
As as mentioned, having to buy multiple pieces.
Yeah.
And tear them down and then do it, but even at that, you're still keeping it in the same district.
It's all just that one block off of Main Street.
Yeah.
Whether that happens or not.
It's south and the first north.
Ain't gonna go anywhere else besides that.
Right.
So this will show you, so the MSR is pretty much this half of the block, the north half, right along here.
Yeah.
And then the south half of this block.
Yeah.
Right along here.
But then if we go back to the zoning, um do you look at that furthest? Um the furthest west one?
So that right now has a development agreement, uh that is for.
Part of the.
Condos and um so it has a development agreement and then this has already been built right here, it's the townhome project.
East end, what about the west?
Oh, the west, oh, over here.
Oh, right, the the last of the MSR.
Right in here?
Yeah, oh wait, that's by the church.
Yeah, that's the church. This is the church.
Parking lot, okay. I just wanted to make sure that wasn't across the street from the orchard. It seemed like it was far to the west. And I didn't wanna see.
So it's right here.
Oh, okay.
That, right there.
I, yeah, there's not too many properties that.
That's the church, isn't it?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, there's not much, I mean, it's all, so if you go further west, that's already being developed in the multiple houses.
And that's not the MSR zone, so it wouldn't be affected anyways.
Right, but then and then you got that small trailer park, which is, is that part of the MSR?
No.
No, it's not.
Yeah.
That's where there's really no property that qualifies.
Right. Can we go back to what the, where the code, um what we're proposing for the new code, yeah? Cause we'll kind of play with that, I think, and do it, let's knock it two birds with one stone. Or two, yeah.
Um so. My my recommendation with this is to. Forward this that we'll be reviewing later to the city council. Because it is part of our uh moderate income housing, so let's get that done, get that, so we we have that strategy done. Cause we still don't know exactly what's going to happen in the future with this, uh you know, planning commission gives a recommendation, city council. Looks at it and so my recommendation would be we move this forward and then we update, update it. Um with the the new public hearing coming forward next week. Um but let's get, let's get this one done, so the moderate income housing, we got that strategy and just in case. Something happens and something's not passed and is delayed. The reason why we're, we did this is we actually set the public hearing before planning or before city council, so we weren't aware that this was. So we weren't aware that this was gonna be coming forth, uh, because we had to send out the public hearing on Friday. And then city council was on Tuesday. Um, when it was decided to bring this forth to the planning commission. So that's why we're having the public hearing, but with it being a moderate income housing, again. It's, it's up to the planning commission and city council, but my recommendation is, is let's get this forward, get it done and we can update. The MSR at the same time, but just to make sure we don't fall behind on this.
Well, for the purposes of this discussion, I do think it would make sense to keep it in the MSR, um.
Yeah.
And I did like the, um, the option of just letting it scale with the size of the lot. Whatever that we determine that scale to be and keeping it at eight per acre, um, seems to be convenient, but, um, I, I like that idea.
I don't even know if I want a maximum density. I don't want twelve units per acre. Let's just keep it eight per, eight units per acre and break it down to. How many per?
So like a quarter acre, half acre.
Two, four, six, eight.
Yeah. Be something along.
Quarter, half, three quarter and then acre can have eight. Cause I don't even know, I can't remember why, what the maximum density would even. What would allow twelve if they? What would they be doing to get twelve? Is that a reduct, like a more, like the little tot lot, like you saying and?
Cause we, we have had developments anywhere between in MSR that are around nine units per acre. To about, I can't remember the highest one. I think it was like between sixteen and eighteen.
Yeah.
And then.
I didn't have, I couldn't make sense, but when they says something that was acknowledged by many was the small. For developments such as the duplex. Were too small to have, uh, to have amenities.
No, I disagree.
Yeah, I don't think you need amenities at that point, because then you have a yard.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry.
Like we looked at past the other ones, this one behind the Chevron.
Yeah.
If you look at their backyard, whether you call it their backyard or front yard, there can't be five feet between that and the property.
Yeah.
And that's the other reason. I don't understand why they allow that, yet I've got tons of space and I can't.
Right, right.
See, so something's gotta be fixed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway. So if you do put a minimum, we wanna make sure that he can put two and he's not required to put anything else, anything more.
I don't think we need to state a minimum. Like if it's, if it's scaling per acre, that tells you what your minimum is. It's either one single family home or eight.
If you had the quarter, you could do two. If you had less than a quarter, you couldn't do more than one.
It's simple, yeah. That makes more sense than getting three townhomes on a quarter acre. They shouldn't have got that. They should have got, they should have had to been on a third of an acre. Yes, yeah.
And then you can break it down per quarter.
Yep. Three quarter.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, maximum of eight per acre and then no minimum acreage.
Yeah.
Prescribed.
Yeah.
I think it takes curve itself, right?
Yeah.
Okay, this, uh, to make sure I understand, so Jason Aspen, I can, I kinda come up with a proposal. Make sure I'm not misunderstanding. So remove the acre requirement.
First sentence on I.
The minimum acre requirement.
Okay, and then the minimum density is one unit per acre, but then you will have it. Go like if it's point two five acres, you got two acres. If it's a half acre, four, three fourths. You're at six and then once you get to an acre, it's eight and then just leave it alone after that.
Yeah, so you.
Is that?
You'd strike.
And you could have three or five in between those.
You'd strike the first sentence and the second sentence would, would read something along the lines of the maximum density in the Main Street residential.
He's allowed three.
Shall be eight units per dense, per acre.
Like that would allow.
And then strike the rest of the sentence.
No, so we don't want a minimum.
We don't want a minimum.
That's what he said.
Oh, not a minimum. Okay, so that's what I, cause I heard that at the first, so I misunderstood.
No minimum.
Yeah.
So on I.
Oh, it's maximum. I get it now.
But we don't want, we don't want to require that.
Yeah, like he could do three.
So on I, you'd strike the first sentence.
And that makes.
You'd change minimum.
Require.
To maximum.
To maximum and then you'd strike everything after eight units per acre.
So you would just have a maximum of eight units.
Yeah.
I wouldn't even do twelve.
So. We removed the twelve, so. I don't think, and I'm totally fine with whatever you propose. Right now, we, I don't know if, I think most of our MSR, the, their. Units per acre, I think the smallest one we have right now is ten or eleven units per acre. So are you thinking of reducing that and only allowing eight units per acre? So they have to have smaller than what we currently have. Is that what you're proposing?
Bigger.
And I'm totally fine with that. I'm just making sure I understand.
Yeah.
Allowing more space on the lot.
Okay, perfect.
Yes.
No, I, I, I'm not disagreeing. I just wanna make sure.
Lots from about, the ones I've been looking at, about point four, four down to point two, five.
Yeah.
You want less density on a smaller lot because you get more crowded.
Yeah.
Yes.
Then you don't have to accommodate tot lots. They have a yard.
You don't need to add amenities that aren't gonna help anyways.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do they have to meet any amenity?
Once they have eight units, they're required to.
And I think they should, yeah.
So. Okay, that, that makes sense. Sorry, I was listening to the first part and then, and I got a little confused. So. Strike out the first sentence and then instead of saying minimum density, do maximum density of eight units per acre.
And keep it in the MSR.
And keep it in the MSR.
So say Main Street residential area shall have a minimum density.
Will that cause an issue with someone wanting to put seven and not just because they don't wanna have to do the tot lot?
No, because they'd.
Have enough space.
They'd have to have.
You think seven will be enough space? I don't know. I'm like just thinking of things that could happen.
They'd have to have seven tenths of an acre to do seven.
Seven eighths to do that.
They'd have to have seven eighths of an acre to do that?
And there are no lots right now that could accommodate.
Yeah, there isn't.
They'd have to buy.
They'd have to buy multiple lots, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're right, seven eighths of an acre, sorry.
I love that. That's what you said. Just think of like, anything between two and two point or point two nine, you can have two. Point three to point. So if they have a, have an acre.
Lot, let's say they have an acre lot and they wanna put seven because they don't wanna do the tot lot in there. I don't know, I, they're probably not gonna, it's probably gonna be worth it to them to build that eighth one and do the tot lot. Yeah, because they'll make more money that way. Yeah, okay.
Wouldn't the tot lot be required?
At eight, not at seven. That's what I'm saying is would they do less just so that they don't have to do the tot lot? And cram more people in, into an acre, just so that they don't have to do that, but I think. I think it'd be, I don't think that.
They'll do the little tot lot with the little dome thing. Yeah.
One will try. I think it makes sense.
So just to, to clarify, because I actu, I heard something a little bit different. So I have the eight units for a maximum. But then I heard about a tiered system where if they have two, like a quarter acre or whatever is two. And then if they have three, point three acres, it goes to three point four acres is four.
No, it'll just be based off.
One per eighth.
One per eighth. Okay, one per eighth.
It's like two per quarter.
Scales proportionally.
Okay.
Two for a quarter, four for a half.
Yep.
Six for a three quarter and eight total, but they could do three, five, seven. Like they could do three if they have a third.
Okay.
If they have like a six, if they have between the half and a three quarter, they could do five.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was.
So. And I don't know if we need to write it that way, but I think that could be a, I don't know.
We just have to make sure we're very, very clear in the code.
Stay proportionate, everyone, yeah.
If it stays proportionate to the size.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, they might have an acre and wanna only build five or seven, like you're saying, they, but they have to, it's a minimum or a max two per quarter.
Two per quarter.
Through four for half. And so if they have a three quarter, you could have.
But you don't have to specify that. All you have to say is maximum of eight units per acre.
You could say or.
Yeah, well.
Or base.
I'll, I'll come up with a, a proposal. We just have to be very careful how we word things, because if it's.
Simple to allow this, but not force people to do more than.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And so I think I know how to do, I just, uh, I'll talk with Jason and Aspen, but we just, uh.
Okay.
We wanna make sure there's no ambiguity, um, and we're very clear, so.
That's, you could, yeah, I would say, yeah, the maximum density to be eight.
I know what you're, you're talking about now. Um, I, I'm just, uh, yep, I should be good.
You could say with them, or a minimum of two per quarter, four for half. So we could still have a minimum, but it'd have to be. In the Main Street residential area, there's, there shall be a minimum lot size of two units per quarter. Four for half, six for three quarter or eight total and with a maximum total of eight units per acre.
Yeah.
That's it. So you could still put a minimum and a max, but the min would be per, per.
You could just say point one, two, five acres required per unit.
Yeah. Yeah. No, that's what I was thinking, because doing the eight units and leaving it just as that, I can see a lot of developers trying to twist that.
Yeah.
Uh, that was my concern, uh, because dealing with developers, dealing with, I can see that being twisted. That's why I was a little concerned, um, but I think that I'll, I'll come up, I'll, and we'll talk with our attorney too and come up with a good plan.
Yeah, that was.
Uh, I don't think you, I don't think you should say point one, two, five per acre.
Per unit.
Yeah, one unit per one, two, five.
Yeah.
Acre. I don't know.
That'd be your, that'd be your max or your minimum.
It's the same thing.
Okay. Good luck.
Word it however it makes a little sense, but I think you know where we're coming from.
Yeah, I, I know where you're going now. We just have to figure out how to word it to where there's no ambiguity. It's very clear. To where people can't twist, twist, twist it to, for their gain.
Right. Makes sense.
Well, that's what, that's what we're proposing, but that's not the code. Yeah.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this opens it up for, this would open it up for existing or new.
Yeah. And only in the.
And that also makes it available to where if your grandkids do decide to make it a triplex, it's still in the code. It's okay. To have it or it's defined as a duplex.
Yeah.
Again, it's just for the MSR.
Yeah.
Just the MSR.
Yes. Yep.
Okay. Good discussion. I think you've got enough direction and we'll look forward to this on a future agenda. All right, let's move on now. You know what? We are gonna do one and two. Let's just do two right now.
Okay, cause it's already up.
We're just working back.
And we've been talking about it already.
Yeah, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, Ms. Martinez, here's your photos.
Well, that's a cool.
Thank you.
It's a cool house.
Right. Okay, this will be agenda item number two. This is a discussion on minimum unit size reduction. Um, in the Main Street commercial area.
So this is very similar to what we did last year. Uh, last year, we reduced this, uh, minimum unit sizes in MSR. All this is doing, we're keeping the same unit sizes. All this is doing is adding the MSC. To these minimum unit sizes, because right now how the code's written. Um, the minim, minimum unit size would be based off of our code in the multi dwelling unit. Uh, section of our code in supplemental provisions, which requires nine hundred square feet for a minimum size. So this is moving the MSR. Uh, those requirements that are located in that section of code and bringing it to this section of code to match what the MSR is. And so it, it says bring in the MSC to where the MSR is currently. So this is the change, so. We removed this paragraph and broke it up into two. Um, and again, this happened before we knew this proposal was coming. Uh, but we felt like it just made it easier to understand. So the, the number one is. That acre requirement, eight units to twelve units, it's, uh, how many units can you have on a lot? And then number two is we broke it up and used that as the square footage requirement for the units. So how it was written before, all we did is we just added Main Street commercial. Everything else is very, the same, all the unit sizes. We just, uh, added Main Street commercial into that paragraph and that's all we really did there. And then this broke it up to make it easier to understand. And so this is part, uh, this proposal is one of our strategies for our multi, or for our, uh. Yes, moderate income housing, thank you. Uh, moderate income housing and it's the same strategy we had last year that was approved.
Okay, this is a proposed code amendment, so we do need to, um, have a public hearing. There's no one here, but we still have to have a public hearing. So we'll open the public hearing at eight oh six and invite any comment. Okay, we'll close the public hearing at eight oh six. All right, discussion, that was covered pretty well. Any concerns about moving those same requirements over to the MSC? I think it makes sense and it allows us to check a box on our moderate income housing strategies.
Yep.
Yeah, I like it.
Yeah.
Cause they still have to meet the MSC codes of being above commercial and all of those different guidelines.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, that should be fine.
Anyone wanna make a motion?
This is on item number two, right?
Yes.
Hey, I would, I'll make the motion. Okay, make a motion to recommend approval of the proposed code amendment, which reduces. The minimum building size for the area in the Main Street Business District Zone.
Okay, we have motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Moke, motion by Commissioner Romero. Any further discussion? Okay, let's vote Commissioner Moke.
Yes.
Commissioner, excuse me, Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Nixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood, yes. Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Okay, that is forwarded with a positive recommendation and unanimous. All right. Let's move on now to agenda item number one. This is a proposed reduction in asphalt requirements for dedicated roads.
So this is based off of state code. So last year or is either last year or two years ago. The state passed a, a law saying that a local residential road, we couldn't require more than thirty-two feet of asphalt. And so we updated our standards and specifications last year, uh, to show that we would only require to thirty-two feet. And this code amendment, uh, is we didn't realize we missed this, uh, in the code. That says we, where we require thirty-eight feet. But we're bringing it down to what the state code requires and what our standards and specs requires, which is thirty-two feet. And this is just for a local road, so that's why we have, um, so the pavement shouldn't be less than thirty-two feet. Cause if it's a collector road, we may need more, but this is the thirty-two feet is what we can require for local roads. So it's, uh, this is coming from our engineering department, uh, and they asked us to do this, just so we are meeting state code in our standards and specs. The one other item that we are changing is there's other portions of our code. That deals with a half plus ten requirements. And the planning commission and the other parts of the code is the land use authority. This is the only section of code that has the city council. So we're just, uh, removing city council, putting planning commission to match the other parts of our code. Uh, so there's no contradictions and it's what we've been doing for the last couple of years. If there's any half plus ten. And it makes sense to you, because the planning commission is the land use authority for preliminary plans and you're approving roads during that time. And that is the land use, or sorry, the planning commission, I didn't sleep a lot. The planning commission is the land use authority, uh, or, oh my gosh. You're not the land use authority. I'm really sorry. Y- your job is to hold a public hearing and to give a recommendation to the city council.
All right, thanks Ryan. Let's do the public hearing at eight oh ten. It's now open.
Eight oh ten?
Eight oh ten. It was eight oh nine when I started talking and the clock switched right as I was saying that.
It's a nine.
So yes, it's eight oh ten. Um, any comments? All right, we will close the public hearing at eight, ten. Okay. It's not eight oh ten anymore. All right, um, so I do have a question though, um. The way I read that last sentence, it almost sounds like that would apply to the half plus ten as well. Am I reading that wrong? The full width of the road is thirty-two feet, right?
Correct, and that's.
That is, uh, we would require the thirty-two feet at the. That is, uh, we would require the thirty two feet at the end or once the whole.
Okay.
You know, uh, road goes in.
Twenty six would be the minimum if they're doing half plus ten.
Yeah, I believe that would be, yes, I'd have to double check with our city engineer, just to make sure I'm not. Doing anything wrong, but if that, I, I can look at that with him and if that last sentence is an issue, we can update it. Before we take it to planning commission or city council.
Okay, yeah, that was confusing to me because it comes right after it talks about half plus ten, but then it says in no case will it be less than thirty two feet, which is the full width. So it almost seems like that just invalidates the half plus ten.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll, we'll look at that and make sure it's updated. I'll work with our city engineer to make sure that's, uh, correct.
Okay, thanks. Any other comments or discussion on this agenda? Okay, we need to forward a recommendation. Does anyone want to?
I can make a motion. I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the proposed code amendment, which updates the required pavement. With two thirty two feet.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Moak. Do we have a second?
Do we, do we, do we need to add to review that piece? That would probably be good. Contingent on reviewing that.
Okay, after reviewing. The wording on the last sentence.
Yeah.
Okay, you're okay with that amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, we have an amended, amended motion by Commissioner Moak. Do we have a second?
And I will second.
Second by Commissioner Romero. Let's vote. Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Wood, yes. Commissioner Nixon?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Moak?
Yes.
Okay, that is forwarded, um, with a positive recommendation and it's unanimous. Alright. We've reached the end via the beginning. Agenda item number five, we need to, uh, approve the minutes from our last meeting on February twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five. Any discussion on those minutes? Nope. Alright, would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, planning and zoning minutes of February twenty fifth.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve by Commissioner Romero. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Wade, all in favor. Yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Okay, those minutes are approved and it's unanimous. Alright, Ryan, what else do we need to talk about?
So for next planning commission, we'll have, uh, the discussion item we just had, we'll have a public hearing, uh, for that item. And then we'll have, the plan is to have one other public hearing, uh, the state. Uh, they've passed all the laws now, they're all done for this, for this year. Uh, there are some parking. Uh, updates we have to do in our parking code. The good news is it's not as bad as what they, it was originally proposed. But we still have to make some updates. Uh, our garage sizes, we can't have twenty four by twenty four anymore. Has to be twenty by twenty. Uh, is for two car garage.
Legislative code?
Mm-hmm. And. So can we require a three car garage? No.
Can we require a two and a half garage?
It's actually, there is a code that if it's owner occupied and moderate income, uh, we can't require a garage at all.
That is crazy.
But they have to have two off-street parking spots. Correct? Uh, we can still require off-street parking, yes, but we can't require a garage in certain instances. So. Well, I, I don't care about the garage. I care about getting these cars off the street. Yeah, yeah, we can still require parking. Um, as many parking stalls, that, that's not an issue. It's just. And the garage size is a, is a minimum size, not a maximum size. Yeah, minimum or that's the maximum. We can't require for a two car for it to count as two parking stalls. Right, but let's, let's say somebody comes in and wants to make a twenty four by twenty four garage, they can still do. Yeah, yeah, you can still do that. Yeah, we can't require that, but they can do it if they wanted. And they can do a third car garage. Minimum. Yeah. Yeah, minimum that we can require. Yeah. So. Okay. It's, it's, yeah, minimum and it's, we can't require any. Let's go to a twelve by twelve double garage. And also they, we now have to require tandem parking, so if there's a garage and they meet the parking requirements. In front of the garage, those count as parking stalls too. Uh, for, and that's specifically for single family, two family and townhomes, so.
Did they not before?
Uh, sorry, was that?
They didn't count before, if you had space in front of the garage?
Yeah, we didn't count tandem before, so. Uh, but they have to meet the parking requirement, which would be nine feet by twenty feet. Um, if it's a driveway, so. Uh, that'll be coming, uh, before you. And then, uh, we'll probably have several public hearings in the end of April. Um, there's other code amendments that we have to do, uh, state, they've updated how lot line adjustments are done. Uh, subdivision amendments and, uh, we have a few other code cleanups we're working on. So we actually have a lot of, uh, code amendments coming down the pipeline. Um, that'll be spread out through several meetings, so, but that's all I have.
Ryan, we're not frustrated with you. We're frustrated.